Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. Please stand with Joni Quintero, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, your role?
Thank you.
Looks like we have four of us who could join us tonight. Item C, adoption of the agenda. Jackie, you mentioned you had an additional list of bills published.
Yes, I do. They are under the summary list of bills.
Brent, do you have any changes to the published agenda?
Yes, so I've got two additional hirings. Denise Lupkus will be number 10 under Personnel, and then Brenda DeBerg, number 11. Denise is the High School Media Center Associate, and then Brenda DeBerg as part-time food service staff.
Is that it?
That's all I have for additions.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those changes. Ready?
Just a moment. I'll second.
Motion second to adopt the agenda with the changes as listed. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, public input on non-agenda items. Anybody signed up to speak this evening?
I did not sign up, Andy, but I just wanted to point out I brought Dominique Quintero with me this evening. She has come on staff of the Life Federal Reporter as a staff writer, and dare I say, eventually will be taking my seat at these meetings. So I think I asked her to come and just get familiarized with how the board meetings happen, so.
Welcome. Anybody else? Anybody want to speak on published agenda items? Reserve time for that. No? Okay, move on. Item E, approval of minutes of past meetings. This is our, is this our first or second month approving meeting minutes in the Simbli format?
This is the second.
Second, okay.
I did do them the last month in the Simbli format, even though we did not actually have a meeting prior to last month.
Okay.
They're a little bit more, as you can see, I guess line item instead of just a written version.
Is it pretty easy to figure out?
Um, it will be. It's a little bit cumbersome, just because I have to, I still am doing paper and pen just so I don't miss anything, but going back and forth between content and the minutes, it's a little bit of a struggle for me on my small screen, but I'll get there, yeah. A lot of copying and pasting, so that's really nice.
Yeah.
What, I remember it gets posted in the paper.
What you're seeing.
This does, okay.
Mm-hmm. I sent it to them, and I have the option to print and save in a Word format, so then they can copy and paste, just like they did before. So that's what I sent.
Any comments on those? Guys, are you ready? Oh, they motion to approve the minutes of past meeting.
I'll second.
A motion second to approve the minutes of the past meetings. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, approval of financial items, financial reports, summary list of bills, plus the additional, and school business report, Jackie. School business official, Jackie.
The first one I'll go over is in the financial reports, the annual treasures report for fiscal year '22. Just an update for you as I continue to work through closing out last year. As you can see, the revenue is posted there for you, up from the year before. Expenditures are posted in the middle, a total of $9.8 million, up from the year before, but that's to be expected with raises and cost increases and that kind of thing. And then our cash balance, as we've been discussing throughout the year, at $3.6, almost $3.7 million, also up because we were allowed to do cash reserve levies and those kinds of things going forward. Our cash reserve levy is not as high of an option at this time, simply because we do have those fund balances. So I wanted to update you on that. That will, shouldn't change too much, but I will continue to update you at the end of August and then after we actually close out the year and submit our annual report, which is in September. So I'll continue to update you on that. Back to the other reports. Annual treasures report for current year. As you can see, pretty minimal information as we start July. So kind of where we ended up last year with revenue, expenditures down from last year, but it's just a timing thing more than it's really anything you need to concentrate on at this point. You can see on the left where things are going. Everything kind of coming in for July is still being accrued back to the last fiscal year, so our revenues are quite limited. And then if you look at special revenue report, that is your management, Pebble, Pearl, Save, and Debt Service. I don't have anything specific to report there. Just kind of keep in mind, the management fund is running at a negative until our property tax receipts come in in October. That's pretty common for our district. We've paid for our property and casualty and our equipment breakdown insurance, part and part of that. So that does take a hit on our management as well as sending off our early retirement payments to our retirees, the ones that still have balances in their five-year plan. Give $30,000, $6,000 over five years. So that went off as of July 1st. So everything kind of hits the management fund at the beginning of the year, and then the receipts come in and it balances itself back out or it gets above zero. So in mid-October, that'll look different. And then physical plant, equipment, Pearl and Save. Those balances will just kind of continue to keep building as we look at some of the projects that we have going forward. We're going to use some of those dollars, obviously, and then obviously look at, looking at a Save revenue bond, I think is what the discussion is. So we'll continue to look at those items going forward. Save, as you can see, transferred for debt. You guys approved that for a July 1st payment. That's noted there. Otherwise, nothing real big to start on the special revenue funds. And then the last one is the activities report, again, for the month ending July. Not a lot of activity in any of those funds. It's kind of quiet during the summer for those funds. So you'll start to see those have a lot more activity as we start the school year. And then the last one I wanted to note was the casino funds. I haven't updated you on those in quite some time, so that is also available for you. That's just sort of a review of the fund. I haven't given you a lot of detail in that as far as, you know, dates and all of that, but you can see that there are about six different line items within the casino fund that we typically use, and that's the fruit and veggie program, and the backpack program, the laptop initiative, school supplies, after prom and after grad, and then curriculum and textbooks. Now, this is a, since the beginning. This is a cumulative, so be aware of that. After I get some additional year-end entries done with the auditor, I'll give a more up-to-date of what we just did last year in addition to this. But I kind of wanted you to see, those are the things that you're, you've been utilizing the casino funds for. Other things to report, we do have a date. I've started working with the auditor and sending some virtual things, and then the field work dates are set for September 12th through the 15th, which is about a month and a half later than I normally do. So we're just kind of taking baby steps as we get to know each other and our workflow, and then they'll send out, I think, at least two people on September 12th. That's what I have to report.
When is that due to the state, Jackie?
My annual report, transportation report, and the special ed report are due September 15th. So I need to have at least my end all balanced and ready to go. So hopefully, we'll have most of that done in advance. Their report is not due until February 1st.
Okay. That's what I was thinking.
We typically have her or them. In the past, we reviewed either in late December or January. Sometimes it's been later than that, depending, but otherwise it is due, I think it's February 1st, either February, March 1st.
In that, yeah. Just want to get in my head that related to the timing of the launch of reports to the state.
Right. And considering the workload and lack of staff, I'm guessing it's going to be as late as they possibly can. This is kind of what I've been told, so unfortunately, unfortunately.
Brent, I've got a question on the student construction fund, not really tied to the financials, but kind of. So the first house we built, the first regular house, I'll call it, I think we had advertised and received bids for that in like the March timeframe before it went off and went to the buyer that summer. Is it just me, or does it feel like this house is further along at this point than we were last time?
If you remember, we sold it in the first year.
It was the first year.
And so we took like a $10,000 deposit, and then we received final payment in the year where they took possession. So it looks like.
We're getting close to that point then with this one?
I think we'll be, whether it's this fall or next spring, ready to make it available to the public. Now, I think we're right about the same place we were. If you remember that first year, our first meeting post-COVID was that public auction. So that same process will probably take place either this fall or this spring. We'll have that conversation with Grant once the school year gets started, where he thinks he's at.
I think with the last time we had the purchaser, we did a little, a little earlier, so they had some choices in the inside finishings, right?
Yep.
Is that going to be the same here?
Yep. So we're actually behind where we were in relation to that kind of buyer being approved and the purchase price being approved. It's one of the things that we learned. You know, Grants wanted to wait, so we're a little bit further down that road.
Yeah.
But we still want to engage with whoever that buyer's going to be for some of the finishes as we approach kind of the year end of this year.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions? Or Jackie cheats back? Or somebody's question on there?
Yeah, a question, Jackie. Is there an easy way to get from the summary report back to the list of bills? And specifically, what I'm looking at is the activity fund.
Okay.
So $68,000 and change of expenses. Does that tie back to the list of bills somewhere?
Not necessarily, because the report is for July 1 through July 31st, and the list of bills could be all the way up till today. But I can get you all that was paid just July through 31st in detailed list.
Okay. Not, not right now?
Okay. I can send that out in email tomorrow.
If, if it's easy?
Yeah, very easy, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so yes and no, easy to provide, but they don't match when it comes to what I, what's presented.
Okay, makes sense.
Anything else for Jackie? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve those items plus the additional list of bills. When you're ready?
I do have a question. So do we pay our, we must pay our officials? You pay them ahead of time?
We, I cut the checks and I give them to Mr. Cruz, so they're ready for events ahead of time.
I get it. I was like, why are some of these dates like August 29th?
If, if you would see the list of officials that he has to compile and give to me, yeah. So we get them ready throughout the year. The number of checks I cut versus the voids that I do and recut, it's probably about a third, because they just change, but we try to be as proactive and ready as possible.
That makes sense.
Yep. So they are not given. They're, they're in the vault.
Yeah.
They're between Mr. Cruz and I, yes.
So if I remember, one of the goals of our district is to be able to give them a check at the night of the event.
That is pretty standard. There's going to be a slight change, change with some of our staff that are officials this year. Otherwise, that's pretty standard throughout the conference, that anyone that's driving a great distance to come work here is getting a check on site.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial items as listed, including the additional list of bills.
I'll second.
A motion second to approve the financial items as listed plus additional list of bills. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Item G, administrative reports, discussion items. Item one, recognition and congratulations to students, staff, and community.
So again, within the Simbli, I have three different kind of groups or individuals to recognize. First would be Lilian Downer. You remember she had qualified in the spring for the International Space Settlement Competition. So in the month of July, she was in Florida competing with 200 students from around the globe. She was a part of a 10-member team that finished second overall in that competition. So quite the accomplishment for her and the other members of her team. And so I tried to give you a little bit more detail based upon some feedback from Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen also attended with Lilian, so we thank him for chaperoning and being a part of that process. We did have some continued postseason honors for baseball and softball players. You can see there, Ellie Durand and Brooklyn Crowe played in a kind of a senior showcase last weekend, actually, not this weekend, but the weekend before. Brooklyn Janzmo was awarded that E. Wayne Cooley Ucan Award, so we want to congratulate her. Those were the three seniors on the softball team, so they all had some postseason recognition. And then Riley Wyler was honorable mention All-State for Class 2A, and then Reese Vanercie was third-team All-State, also Class 2A for the boys. So congratulations to them. And then Terry Van Berkom, we want to say thank you to him for installing some, not only carpet in our building for teachers' classrooms and in other spaces, but he also installed and donated his time out at the ball field. So if you remember, in the spring, we poured some additional like batting cage area and some spaces around the baseball field that we didn't have the Ashtray trophy in. It was, again, delayed for its arrival, and so he did that after the seasons were over. So we want to thank Terry. He's done all that over the course of all the years, back to the baseball field many years ago, and now wrapping up our most recent additions out there. So any additions, Ms. Stranglman?
No. Very good. Congratulations to those folks. Item two, any additional communications?
Put on your desks invite from the CLEA to the back-to-school picnic. So if you would, connect with Michelle Van Y. If you and your family will be able to join, scheduled for the 7th, so that first Wednesday after Labor Day. That's all the communications I had, Jackie. Did you have anything else?
That's the only one that was given to me to get to you.
Okay.
More staff presentation this month. Moving on to principals, I noticed that Mr. Harmon has a little write-up in there. Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, again, he, we want to thank all the teachers involved with the kind of gear up for school, kind of back-to-school reading program. Again, we recognize a host of staff members that at the beginning of the summer were involved with the summer reading program, but we just finished this last week, that two-week second session of summer school for our elementary students, and appreciate the staff members that helped with that.
Thank you. Ms. Stranglman?
Yeah, but attention, my welcome back to school letter, the district welcome back letter. Just highlighted a couple of things, upcoming events. And we have that open house TK through 12 here on Thursday, 5 to 7. Just an opportunity for students and families to come meet and greet the staff. I do host a more formal parent-student seventh grade. Even at the auditorium, and I encourage everyone to attend that can, that can in that particular grade level kind of go over the do's and don'ts, and kind of it's a nice opportunity for me to meet some of the, meet some of those folks. I haven't quite, I haven't quite had the opportunity to do so. So that is coming up. That's also on the 18th, and obviously, the first day of school. I highlighted the three different junior high practice dates, start practice dates, and some of those are just team meetings and equipment handouts, but wanted parents and students to know when those are. And then I, I just quickly put some points of emphasis that I included in my letter that include school attendance, student accountability, safety, and then kind of that developing understanding skills. Just emphasizing a few things, nothing that's, nothing that's too far out there, but just want to highlight a few things that we're going to continue to focus on and maybe put a little, a little more focus on this, this school year. So just a little correspondence between me and the students and the families.
Good, thank you. Any questions for Jason? Okay. Superintendent report, Mr. George.
Also in the Assembly document, I've got three things to bring the board up to speed on. First is the Buildings and Grounds Committee. We were scheduled to meet last Tuesday, but Scotty had moved in duties with his son back to school, so we rescheduled for this Thursday. And so kind of the big things we'll be talking about, continuing our conversation from last month about the passenger vehicle recommendation. Lane has some quotes for the committee to review. We'll provide a recommendation in September when we get back together. We continue along the facilities planning. We're going to talk a little bit more and connect with Matt Basie tonight about the middle school bridge project. But I did meet with, with Gary Kurth, so bring the committee up to speed on what that's going to look like for our parking lot project and the sports complex updates down at the football and football field and track. Included in, in the packet here is a quote from Heartland Scenic in regards to the auditorium. Awaiting similar quote from Omaha Stage. So hope to have, again, some recommendations for those. Again, we're planning to partner with the foundation. They've identified auditorium upgrades as their big project for this school year. Also been in touch with River Valley Players. They're going to be a part of that to help support the upgrades in the auditorium, and then I plan to write a riverboat grant. So between ourselves and those other entities, hopefully, we can take care of all of those things that were identified in the facility study. And then we will continue to plan for the Bus Barn project and the classroom upgrades project so that we can, as a board, hopefully in September, no later than October, take a vote on it, a save bond for those projects. As we've noted all along the way, the costs for any building project right now are highly volatile, whether it's supply costs or staff costs. Until we actually go to bid, it's hard for the architect to pinpoint an exact price. And so we just want to continue to meet as a committee and continue to stay in contact with FEH and all the other entities that we're working with. So those are the two big ones. Also, joining us will be Randy Wackmeister to continue the conversation about the land swap proposal from the development group. So he'll be at the committee to answer questions. So again, whether we take action yet this fall or decide not to, we'll have that recommendation coming back from the Buildings and Grounds Committee. So that's the first one. Jason kind of hit the back-to-school schedule. I would like to thank Rhonda, Leah, and Ethany Poulsher for their work with registration. Again, I don't have definitive numbers as far as who's, what the exact new family numbers. Ethany continues to work on that. She gets more, more, more familiar with GMC and the registration process. I'll have a more definitive answer, an update for us in September, knowing that October is our official count date. So I'll just continue to update everybody on that. And then like Jason said, open house is scheduled this Thursday. We want all TK through 12th grade students and families to attend that possibly can drop off their supplies for the year, meet their teacher, and like Jason said, he's got a meeting with seventh grade families. Otherwise, teachers will be back in the building and staff on Friday and Monday, and kids walk through the doors next Tuesday. So a lot of things going on this week, and we're excited to have kids back next Tuesday. The last item is just a reminder. I'm going to, starting in September, be putting the board packet out a week earlier than usual. So my hope is by Friday, September 2nd, before everybody's off for the long Labor Day holiday, you'll have the packet in your hands. Now, just like tonight, I would anticipate, you know, if it's hirings or there's some changes to a list of bills.
I won't have them done on time, too.
We will, you know, continue to update the Simbli site, but as far as the action items, it's our goal to have those in your guys' hands, so you guys can review it. Ask me, Jackie, other district leaders the questions leading up to the meeting. Everybody has some clarity on those things. So that's one of the nice things with Simbli. Those things can just be uploaded, the supporting documents, as we go. But again, hopefully, the agenda doesn't change much from putting the packet out a week ahead of schedule.
Are we notified when something was added?
Yep. So you should get an email that says this is, and it should come right from Simbli, that says Brent has added a supporting document or this agenda item now has a recommendation or what have you, when that happens automatically.
Did you guys get anything this afternoon when I added the additional list of bills?
I don't think I did.
I don't think I did either.
And that would have been around 10 to 3? Let's say 3 o'clock, a little before.
Well, that's. We'll make sure, reconnect with Heather, then make sure that those are turned on.
I'm guessing in the app, probably. If you have the app, I mean, if you download the app, I guess it would send you an application.
It might be a feature that I need to enable from the user side, because like, as Jason and Steve found out this week, I can create that workflow. So if I've added an agenda item where they've got reports to make, they get automatic notification that I'm asking and requesting that. And then when they complete it, I get a similar type of notification. I want to make sure that you guys also get that same notification when new information's added or new documents are attached.
If you need to send out a test item or something.
You can hear it now here now?
So the other item there is, I don't know if I included it in there or not. I thought you did. One thing that I would like to start also doing in September is, you know, it's kind of been our practice to sign bills after the meeting. I think that'll be our last agenda item starting in September before we adjourn. So, you know, if folks in. So, you know, if folks in, that are physically here want to stay, great. If they want to take off after we have our announcements, they can do so. But that way, the cameras will keep rolling, you know, if we've got questions for Jackie about a particular bill, like a lot of times we do, all that just remains kind of as a part of the, the regular meeting. So, if you guys are okay with that, you guys have a feedback for a different way to, to handle that, happy to entertain those, but I think we'll try that for a couple of months and just kind of see how it goes. So, that's all I have for my report.
Okay, item six, board committees. Mr. George covered Buildings and Grounds. Not sure that we have anything else to report with the committees. Policy sharing, nothing there, right?
Correct.
Okay. On to item H, old business. Item number one, consider the second reading of the policies, new policies listed.
Yeah, so, again, we've got nine policies. The majority of these are based upon the legislative updates that were included in the, the primer from the department or the School Board Association. We had our first reading last month. The only policy in there that didn't come from the primer was 50204, Student Complaints and Grievances. Again, we established, based upon the policy committee's conversation, timelines for students to make those, formal appeals or complaints, and then, starting with the teacher, then to the principal, superintendent, and then the final step is consideration from the board for it to be a part of the next regularly scheduled board meeting. So, the others in there, you know, again, just provided an update, but there's a total of nine policies for the second reading.
Any other questions or discussion on those based on the second reading? So, this will be the last reading of them, and they'll be formally adopted after that?
Yep.
If, if they're approved. If not, I'll entertain a motion if you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the second readings of the policies listed. Second?
Motion in second to approve the second reading of the policies as listed. Want to favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to item I, new business. Item number one, consider proposals for middle school bridge and door replacement project.
So, if you guys don't mind, I'm just going to give Matt Basie from FEH a call, have him join the meeting. You know, I did provide some updated information here in the agenda. Matt, kind of walk us through the process for the middle school bridge project and some options for the board going forward.
Hello, Brent?
Hey, Matt, I got you on our conference call. So, we are in our meeting, and I just, just introduced the, the new business item. Haven't provided any detail or explanation, but to bring everybody up to speed, so we're all on the same page. Last Thursday was our deadline for proposals for the project. We received only one proposal. That was from Wilchin. We were hoping that we would receive multiple proposals, yet we only did receive one. And so, I was hoping that you could maybe kind of walk us through that process, what the options are for the board, and then just kind of open it up to questions that the members might have.
Certainly will. Hello, everybody. Sorry, I couldn't be there with you in person, but I did want to just give you some background on the process and how this all came together and what your options are going forward. If anybody has any questions, just give Brent the high sign, and he can interrupt me anytime I'm talking here. As you all know, your facilities committee had been our point of contact for the project along with Mr. George. We went through the process of the study. Out of the study came this project as one of the priorities for the district to start with. So, we put it together as a project that we could send out for competitive bid proposals instead of the full bidding procedure. There are several different ways you can obtain costs and do work for projects depending on the cost of the project, and that would be based on the initial estimate. We provided an estimate for the project that we thought was good faith estimate, calling around to contractors, looking at the conditions that have been going on now, and we had estimated the project at just under the bidding, full bidding threshold of $139,000 in the state of Iowa here. So, since that was the case, we talked with the committee about sending this out as a competitive proposal instead of a full bid project. The difference being that, under a full bid project, you're required to provide notices to bidders, have a public hearing, and some other legal procedures that constitute the bid process. When the estimate for the project is under a certain threshold, based on the size of the community that you live in and the type and scope of the project, we can send it out for less than full bidding, which we did here. And that means that you are required, based on the cost, to get at least two competitive proposals, if you can, obtain them when you send them out, and then you can act on them. If you do not receive two, as long as you have, my understanding anyway, as long as you have a viable proposal that meets the requirements of what you put out in the competitive RFP, then you are able to act on that as well. We did contact quite a few contractors, and when we sent this out, we realized that this project wasn't a big project, it was a bit of a difficult project for logistics, timing, that kind of thing. And so, we kind of figured we might have a little bit of trouble obtaining bidders. So, one other thing that we did was we paired this project with a replacement of some aluminum door entrance systems around the district, two of them in the main building and two in the activity center. And that was an attempt to try to get a few more people maybe interested, raise the cost of the project a little bit, so that we might get some more interest. So, we did the process, we sent the RFP out. We actually started with a two-week period to get numbers back. Couple of the contractors that we were talking to asked us if we could have another week, so we pushed that back. I think you guys also moved your meeting around, so that helped us push that back a little bit. And so, there was three weeks to do the competitive process. Mr. George did call at least one of the bidders, if not more, and tell them the situation, tell them that they had good experiences with the contracting firm before, and asked them if they would be interested in bidding. And ultimately, we got the one competitive quote from Wilchin. It is significantly over what our estimate is, and so, we wanted to explain to you tonight what the process was, give you some background so that you can make a decision on how you want to move forward. My understanding of the competitive quote rules under this scenario are, even though the project came in over the threshold, since the estimate, which was done in good faith, was done, and the project was put out based on the estimate, not the bids that you get, you still can act on this project if you wish, meaning that you can accept the whole thing, you can reject the whole thing, you can even split it into two parts. We did bid it in a way that we got a number for just the repair of the bridge project, and we also got a separate number for the aluminum door replacement. So, if you wanted to move forward with that portion of the project, you could without the bridge, or vice versa. I think to be completely certain, and so that you're all clear, you may want to have a, a legal opinion about that, but it is my understanding of the rules that you can act on this proposal if you wish. If you decide to do that, we would write a contract just as we normally would for the contract, contractor. It would go forward just like any other project. You should be aware also that we specified the substantial completion date. We were trying to get the project done by the end of this calendar year. The proposal that we got back, I allowed them to give us an alternate substantial completion date if they couldn't meet our request for some reason. And this proposal that we got back did push the substantial completion back to, I think it was May 31st of '23. The reason for that being, there were a couple products here. The bridge is, base structure is made out of concrete plank material. That ended up having a long lead time into next year in March, and then the aluminum doors was also out to February. And we have seen this quite a bit, that things are taking a lot longer to get. So, there was an alternate end date given of May 31st. So, if you acted on the project, we would give them till next May to finish the work, it would proceed like a normal project would. If you decide to reject this proposal, which is your right to do, then you have a couple options. If you reject it based on the cost, we could try to make some changes to the design that may save some money. I don't believe that's a real viable option. I think we have the system that we need to use, and it's the most efficient and economical one, but we could look into some cost-saving measures possibly, and put this out for a proposal again, to see if we would get any more interest. You could also send it out as a bid project, since we know now that the cost is higher. So, we could send it out as a bid project, you could do your hearings and notices, we could send it out to other contractors to see if we got any more interest, and that, that option is available to you as well. Either of those options, if you reject, will ultimately cause the project to take longer, because now we'll have more time to redesign and some bidding time and that kind of thing, so it may take longer for it to get done. And unfortunately, right now, with cost escalation and, and all that kind of thing, it's probably going to cost more at the end of the day if you waited. If, if you would like my recommendation, assuming that you have the funds to do the project, and you still believe it's a high priority project to complete, I think it would probably be the best idea to go ahead with it now. I don't see rebidding or sending it out for other proposals. I really don't see those changing the situation very much as far as cost, or for that matter, getting other contractors to be interested. I did a little poll of the contractors that we sent it to, and we had, I think there were five or six on the list that we sent it to, and we got one proposal. All of them basically said that they had issues with the timing and manpower and a lot of things. So, I think the proposal that we got was because you asked this contractor to give you a proposal, and he figured out a way to make it work in his schedule. So, I think there were some just issues with the size and scope of the project that made it a little bit less attractive to people, which I think we kind of knew about in the beginning. So, that's a lot of information at once. I, I'd like to give you a chance to ask me any questions, if you have any, or Mr. George, if I missed anything, you can let me know, and I'll respond to that.
So, just to kind of review here, Matt, our options tonight are, if they want to move forward, they can accept the proposal as presented, and then we would engage with Wilchin.
Correct.
Option two is to reject the proposal, and if they reject it, we got a couple options there as well. We could go through a full bid process to try to encourage multiple bids.
Right.
Or we could try to redesign and go through the proposal process, which is probably going to be below the $139,000 threshold that the law recognizes as, as the need for, for bid.
Right, I think the situation now is, if I could just expand on that a little bit, if you were to reject it now, and we know that the cost is, well, this particular contractor's cost is $200,000, I don't think we would use that competitive quoting mechanism. Again, I think we would definitely go out for bid.
Okay. But it's your recommendation that, or your belief that it's not, cost probably isn't going to go down, and the timeline isn't going to be any better than next spring regardless?
I believe that's the case, after having called a lot of them and talked to them about the situation and things. I think that, unfortunately, we're sort of caught in a timeframe when there's just still so many unknowns, and we just have a, a very big labor shortage. The one thing that is nice about Wilchin's outfit is that most of the work that was in the proposal, they could self-perform, which means they don't have a lot of subcontractors that would be working on it. They can do a lot of that themselves. For example, the concrete work, setting of the big concrete members, pouring concrete for sidewalks and things, and some of the masonry repairs, they do all that in-house, so that's kind of a nice feature of them. But I do believe, at this point, that if we went out again, and we don't change anything, it's probably going to come in even a little higher next time, because costs are still going up, and it will cost us time. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't always say that, this is just based on the conditions that we're seeing now.
Matt, I've got a question for you. If you go to, through the formal bid process, do you use a, a bidding service or a plan hosting site for electronic plans, or do you send to plan centers or anything like that?
Yeah, we did that here, too. We used Beeline and Blue out of Des Moines. They, and all of the contractors that we contacted are members of an association, so whenever there's a project, whether it's for full bidding or it's for a proposal like this, if we send it to them, they all get notified of it. That also notifies any subcontractors or suppliers or any of that that are around and interested. So, a project like this, when we send it out for proposals, we, we pretty much invited several general contractors, but if anyone had seen it on the exchange, is what it's called, they could have bid also. All they had to do was let us know. So, we did not restrict this, even though it wasn't full bidding, we didn't restrict it in any way, and it was hosted by a, an exchange, as you suggested.
Okay, thank you.
Do we think that the timeline is a major factor, that, I mean, Wilchin asked for an extension, did the others ask for that, or could that have changed things if they...
Yeah, good question. So, let me tell you how I So let me tell you how I handled that. There's two things that I did a little bit differently than we had talked about at the committee level. And both of them were in response to things that I heard from contractors and then things that I had been thinking about myself. So the first thing that we did is we split the project into two bid packages. That is, we kept the bridge repair as one bid package and the door replacement as a separate one. Thinking that there may be a door contractor that just wasn't comfortable with the bridge part and all they wanted to do was the door part. So we tried to split it. That wasn't originally how I had it planned. But after I had talked to some of them, we did split it up so they could do that. The other thing that happened was as we were calling around to get, to gauge interest and see if we could send this project to different contractors, we did ask them about lead time issues, what their schedules were, all that kind of thing. Once we heard that information, I sent out an addendum, which is a change to the bidding procedures during the bidding process or the competitive quote process that basically said, if you cannot meet our timeline, please propose an alternate timeline and we will consider it. So I had specifically said, tell us how many more days you need. Tell us which products are causing this to be lengthened. Tell us if it has to do with your manpower. I asked for all that information during this process. Unfortunately, since we only got one to respond, I only know that Wilchin requested that addition, you know, through to May 31st of 2023. I don't know about the other ones since I didn't get any. But we did make it, we removed all barriers that we could think of removing in order to get some more participation.
Okay.
Andy, or excuse me, Dave or Amy, any questions for Matt?
Matt, is your assessment that the elevated cost or the delta between the less than $139,000 and $211,000 is mainly just due to additional materials costs?
No, I have to admit, I think that our estimate was probably a little bit off. You know, we put, we had a really hard time gauging what the cost was going to be. We made a lot of calls ahead of time to different manufacturers, especially the precasters and contractors and things. And we, we put in what we thought was reasonable at the time that we put it out. It just didn't bear out that way. And I think, so I don't think you could necessarily make the direct correlation between the, the cost of the estimate and the cost of what it came in at. I think there were other factors, but I think the estimate was off. I think it was the timing. I think it was manpower and I think it was material. I think it was the perfect storm, honestly. We just had a project that was pretty small. Not a lot of people that could do it all. A little bit of custom work in there, which is a little tough for some, and then the timing. Most, you know, I would say for perspective, most of the time if you have a bid that comes in low, high or something, you really can make that determination that it's just because, you know, some material went up. Like ordinarily, if we do an estimate and we have a bid and it comes in high, we always ask the contractor to give us their breakdown afterwards. We can find one or two line items usually that have broken the estimate where we were just off or costs went up or something. Nowadays, it's sort of across the board, a lot of different factors.
What's our urgency with this project? I know we wanted to do it this fall and now we're thinking the spring. Is it something that we really, I know it's a safety thing, so it's, I know it's of importance, but any thoughts on?
Yeah, the structural engineer's report didn't identify an imminent danger to folks that might be utilizing that. And I think, you know, our, we've taken some steps the last couple of years, especially with snow removal and, you know, exiting of students using that to limit the traffic on there. Whether we do it in the spring or we do it a year, like 18 months from now, the bridge isn't going to collapse. You know, structurally, it's sound. It's just, there's portions that are starting to deteriorate. And it's, and continues to be a need. And so if we wanted to look at a different timeline, we could look at a different timeline. There's just not necessarily any guarantees that those costs, whether it's material costs or it's labor costs are going to go back down anytime soon. Would you concur with that, Matt?
Yeah, everything that you said there, I agree. It's not an imminent danger. It's a safety concern in the fact that it's starting to deteriorate. Nothing there that would cause you to not use it and coordinate off or anything. It's just what you said, I agree is correct.
Matt, do you think our bus barn project will have more bidders compared to this work?
I do. That one is a much more significant project. It's also not as technically intricate as this one. And I don't mean that to sound like the bridge repair is real technical, but there are some aspects of it that are just a little more technical than what we'd be doing. I think, I think we'll have much better luck with that for sure. It would be possible if you wanted to consider, you know, we've talked about the fact that when we did the study, you have sort of an à la carte menu here of different projects and things that you're doing. We could look at combining this with another project that is a little more significant or sort of like just putting it in with something that's a little more palatable for people or more interesting for people to do. I would certainly entertain that should you decide to reject this or not do it at this point in time. My only hesitation with that is that the longer we wait, I'm afraid the higher the costs are going to go because I still don't believe they're going to come down in the foreseeable future.
So it could be something like a required alternate?
Exactly. We would do it as an alternate. And what we would do then is we would say, if you're going to bid on the project, you have to bid on all the alternates. So required alternate, correct?
Yep. Anything else for Matt?
Okay. Thanks, Matt, for joining us. I don't think we've got any more questions.
Okay. Feel free to call me back if you do or just let me know what you decide.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, everyone.
Discussion?
So.
Yep, go right ahead.
I mean, I feel like it's a very significant overage. And I guess my feelings that sometimes I feel like a bid sometimes is better because it keeps contractors honest. And sometimes I feel like if we contacted this person and he knew we were kind of desperate, we didn't have a lot of interest. I mean, I know people that do construction and if they don't really want the job and they don't have the time, they just throw a really high number, I guess. You know, so I kind of feel like, is that what happens here?
It's hard to gauge what is, what would the competitive landscape be if there was another bid? You know, with only one, it, it's hard to gauge whether or not it's really just a, a matter of higher costs, which construction costs are high right now. I, I agree with Matt. I don't think they're going to come down, but I, I don't think they're going to escalate as high as quickly as they have in the last couple of years. So I don't know, we may not, we may not, due to materials costs, may not go down for whether it's Wilchin or anybody else. But I think there's at least a possibility that with more competition, there could be a, a lower bid. It, it makes me a little bit nervous, as you said, with a significant overage that this is, and as you alluded to as well, when there's, when somebody is not hungry for work, they're going to bid high. I don't know when anybody's going to be hungry for work, but I think there's at least a possibility there is more profit in here for them than there may be at other times. Whether it's them or, or another company. And I'm not, I'm not trying to discount them or trying to, you know, badmouth them by any means at all. That's not the point. But I, I don't know.
I'll remind the board though too, when we did the second phase of the restroom project in the locker rooms upstairs, we had one bid in a full bidding process. Granted, it was a different architect and a different firm that we had worked with, but similar process, so to speak, where we went through that full bid process, public hearing, you know, all the required notices to all the contractors, the same phone calls and walkthroughs for those that are interested. So it does go both ways. And then if we do go through that bidding, that formal bid process, again, you have the same options. You can either accept the lowest bid for which we did when we only had the one bid or you can reject all bids or the one bid if it's only, you only get one and restart the process, redesign, you know, increase or decrease the scope of the work, so on and so forth. But.
So am I comparing this to, when I go back to this document, what I see in, in here is a total cost of less than $40,000. Is that an apples-to-apples comparison to this $200,000?
No. So when we met as a Buildings and Grounds Committee back in July before we put the proposal out, that's where he revised his $40,000 estimate to include the four doors, not only the one door coming in from the walkway, but also the material costs he was able to dial in closer. And it was like $132,000 estimate, which was under the 139 bid threshold.
So there were additional things included in there from the $39,000.
Yep.
And I think that was made without a whole lot of that $40,000. They had spent a lot of time doing.
His $40,000 mark was really just replacement of the concrete, you know, sections for the walkway.
Okay.
Didn't include the structural.
That's why I was saying, well, how can this possibly be?
So then it's 132 about, is what you said, the new estimate was about.
His new estimate in June or in July before we went and made the proposals.
And their proposals to 82.
And even if you just pull apart that bridge repair portion though, it's still significantly higher, four apples to apples versus that initial.
Okay. So was the 132, did that include the additional doors?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. So we're comparing 132 to 280,000. Yes. So it's over twice.
Matt, I, I think the conversation is different if we're having multiple bids here. If we had multiple bids that were within the ballpark, if you will, then it's just a question.
You'd have one validating another, essentially.
Right. Then it's just a question of whether or not we want to spend the money. I'm not sure we're there yet with that, considering the jump we had from the budget in the facilities planning to the estimate through the actual bids. That's seven times, right, of the planned on spending. I think we're all confident they would do good work. It's just a matter of, you know, what we want to do there. You know, the, the timeframe to me at this point, not sure it matters too much if we need to spend an additional two months because if they weren't going to be done until the end of May of 2023, we'll give them the rest of the summer and let it be done. But my, my question to Matt about the bus barn project was, does it make sense? If, if we do elect to reject all the bids here, does it make sense to accelerate that bus barn project and include this work as part of that as, as an alternate? Like Matt said, hey, if you want to do the easier ground-up bus barn portion, you got to kind of do the tougher stuff too.
Or something else. Maybe some of the other work at the athletic complex or whatever.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this just, it, it just makes me a little leery to accept this when it's, you know, significantly over what the estimate was. You know, and so part of me says there's, Matt and FEH have at least some credibility in their estimates. And we don't have anything else to compare it to. And it may very well come back to be that two or three of it, or some of it, come back with a similar cost. I don't know, but that's what I'm handicapped by, what I feel like I am anyway, is I don't have anything to compare it to right now.
And I've been in Matt's shoes, you know, I've put estimates together before on my projects that have been blown out of the waters by one or multiple bidders. And sometimes you just, certain aspects, certain things just drive the cost, regardless of the inflationary environment we're in, and that's just the way it is.
Yeah. And I think it's even exacerbated by the inflationary environment right now. I have the same concern about the bus barn and the other projects. I gotta be that much more, more than that twice as much, but higher than what our estimates are at this point. And obviously, the longer we wait, the more potentially higher costing would be.
Matt, I was just going to say, I think when we talked our original timeline, we wanted FEH, whether it was the bus barn project or it was DGR in the parking lot in the athletic complex, to try to dial in those estimates by our September board meeting so that then we can consider, you know, what our bonding capacity is with the reality of increased bonding rates. And what that's ultimately going to mean for us is a, you know, do we have $8 million to spend or $6.5 million to spend, which is what really all these projects in totality we had estimated. So I think if you do reject, which that's my recommendation, much like your guys' conversation, FEH and these contractors have some time, not a lot of time. But if we're out to maybe bid later this fall, October, November, hopefully we get more interest because our timeline is still going to be to start the bus barn, hopefully as soon as the snow melts and the ground is thawed, which would maybe line up to a similar type of timeline for the bridge project.
So are, are we kind of all on the same page that we think we're going to reject this bid? Because then I just kind of want to turn the conversation to what do we want to do next? Do we want to take? I don't think it's going to cost the district too much to go through a formal bidding process. The design document's already done. It's just taking some additional steps. So we can do that or we can just pump the brakes and say, no, let's combine it into a bigger project, whether that's the bus barn or some of the site improvements at the fields and move forward that way.
And that'll be, again, our conversation with the Buildings and Grounds. We'll continue that Thursday and we'll update the board on what that's going to look like.
And maybe that's a question we just put back to Buildings and Grounds.
I think so, I think between Carrie and Scott and Brendan, FEH, I think we'll put it back to them and say, make a recommendation.
Good.
Do we just bid this one project or do we combine it with something else? Or what's, what's happening? I thought anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
I think we need to, yeah, we need to pass this.
Yeah. And you were here for the conversation along with Brent. So having a representative on B and G that was here for the discussion will help. So I guess with that in mind, I entertain a motion to, let's just reject all bids even though we only received one. That's okay.
I'll make a motion to reject the bid, all bids for the bridge project. Second?
Okay. We have a motion second to reject all bids for the school bridge and door replace, door replacement project. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Item two, consider 2022, 2023 student handbook. Mr. George, I know you had some highlights in that document as well.
Yep. So, you know, the recommendation is to approve the, the updates. You know, majority of these, I've just highlighted in the details here, have to. Have to do with the attendance policy, absences, makeup work, requirements to participate in activities, field trips, the student complaints and grievances. Academic eligibility policy, that steps of appeal that would align with the student complaints and grievances and then late work and complete work. I know Mr. Engelmann, you know, got a renewed emphasis on attendance and make makeup work and so that those are the things that are really reflected in. The student handbook and then, like I said, the policy that you guys approved tonight with student complaints and grievances. We use that same type of process in an academic ineligible appeals process, starting with, you know, the student and the and the teacher and then the. Principal on a kind of a five day kind of. Steps in that five school days for the appeal for the student or the family. After the principal would come to the superintendent and then ultimately could end up with. A decision from the board at a regular meeting, so just try to be consistent as we possibly can with that process. Anything that you want to highlight, Mr. Engelmann?
No, I think you, you know, there consistency is a big thing, documentation. You know, a lot of these things step from, you know, instances that happen throughout the course of the year. I sit down with staff at the end of the year, talk about what can we do to improve. There's some miscommunications and clarification and this is what we came up with. Yeah, it's just things we want to, again, focus attendance, you know, the same is littered with attendance policies and documentation, just, you know, we're coming off of that COVID. Timeframe, we just want to buckle down on the attendance and make sure kids are in school as often as possible and give them kind of the procedural things to. You know, so we can keep better accountability where everybody's at as far as in the class and then in school.
Do the students get introduced to these at all?
Yep, beginning of the year, first first day of school, I spend time with all the different classes and we go over the updates as well. It's just the common things. It's ready.
So that's why he kind of, I mean, his his waterfall of communication starts with that back to school letter reiterated with kids when they're back in person. Some of the same things he'll talk about at open house with the seventh grade families, so. Appreciate his work on that.
Maybe a little bit of off topic here, but. There, at least at my employment, COVID has been making a resurgence, so maybe worthwhile review of policies, practices. And just make sure that we're all on the same page and we know what happens when a student gets sick or a staff member gets sick or whatever.
Any other questions for Mr. George or Mr. Engelmann?
Make motion to approve the student handbook for two thousand twenty two, twenty three.
A motion and second to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three student handbook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item three, consider twenty twenty three IASB legislative priorities.
So. Asking for your feedback or approval of the five priorities I've listed there. First one, local accountability and decision making. Number two, teacher recruitment and licensure. Third, supplemental state aid, so, you know, per pupil funding. And then four, standards and accountability, basically the curriculum and the assessment and professional learning components. And then the fifth one, kind of mental health with a focus on student mental health supports and then training for staff. The first four are the same as we approved last year and our feedback for ISB. The fifth one is new this year. Based upon all the conversations and the feedback that we had throughout the course of the year last year in regards to the mental health needs of our students and the. Supports that we can provide our staff. There's more detail there in the in the memo. And then I also attached all of ISB's legislative priorities and platform from last legislative session, if you've got other recommendations or other items that you would like to consider.
Discussion on those. The fifth one is new this year. Is that in addition to or replacement of?
In addition, so we just had four priorities last year. I've got five this year.
First four we had.
A year ago. Yep, are the same.
This doesn't really have to do with necessarily the. The policy, but like the mental health aspect. I'm curious. Accessibility wise, like how the office is set up. Is that the best way for students? Sometimes I just worry about like the privacy, like if there's a lot of kids in the. Little lobby area per se or whatever you would call that, to have to go to the guidance counselor. Does that? I guess scares some students off because I know that gets used kind of as a. Area for some kids. Does that?
Mr. Engelmann, do you want to provide any feedback for the seventh through twelfth grade, kind of your opinions or your observations?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely see that same.
Like I've heard sometimes, like, some of those kids don't want to walk through there, kids that might actually need the help because they might have to walk through a bunch of. Popular kids hanging out in there and I just want to make sure it's accessible for kids that actually.
Yep, absolutely. It can be a little bit difficult sometimes to know, which, I mean, you'd like to think they're all being productive in there and sometimes they're not.
Right.
The word comes into play of what questions they're asking or what projects they're working on, so most of the time they tell you or there's. Some type of college coursework that they're working on that need assistance from Jessica, who also provides academic guidance as well as the council guidance.
Yeah.
So that's where I think sometimes those two things can. Are in combination or another. We need to do a better job of just making sure those times are scheduled out.
Yeah.
And then you're where you're supposed to be when you're not asking those questions. You don't work through it in there. You ask a question and then you go, so that's something we've kept an eye on over the course of the last year or two and it's gotten a little bit better from time to time, but then. We get back in some old habits of. At, you know, scholarship application, completion and all these other things.
Right.
These upperclassmen are going through that. They want more assistance than probably what they necessarily need.
I'm wondering, like, would it make more sense for her to sit out in the the front area so? And then if she has to have like a private conversation to go back in and focus or not, is that not really feasible?
Possibly. It's it's hard to tell knowing.
Yeah.
Not knowing the the kids in which who need to see her and what, you know, some will go back there and some just want to be private with their academic material and some don't care so much.
I just heard some feedback about that, so I was just curious if that's the best setup for kids that actually need mental health.
Sure.
Yep, and I would encourage you, if you have parents or kids even that are bringing those to your attention. You know, start with obviously Mrs. Harmon.
Yeah.
Provide that feedback. You can direct them to Mr. Engelmann or myself so that we can really. Document that and have that conversation with Mrs. Harmon to make sure that. Kids are comfortable, especially in the seventh through twelfth grade.
Right.
Getting the support that they need in terms of the mental health supports. Yep, any of those those individuals that are reaching out, please direct them right back to to us.
Yeah, I think the the fifth one's a good one to add based on the discussions that we had some long discussions in here about that very issue of mental health and. Also the the ongoing follow up that we're keeping a pretty close eye on that, so. I'm fine with the items as listed and adding the fifth one, but someone feels strongly about another one. Sure, we'll listen to that, too. There was a lot of them in there.
There's it's a big document here, so.
Is there any more discussion on that?
And Brent, maybe where Amy's been, but what happens with these now after we approve these, then what?
So I complete a a feedback survey to ISB and then at the annual convention, there's a delegate assembly where. They prioritize based upon all the school districts' feedback about what those legislative priorities are gonna be and then they update that document. And then push it back all out to us so that when we're advocating locally with our legislators, we know what ISB has as their priorities, but then we. Have ours that might be similar, might be different, so that we can continue those conversations and kind of, we're all working together instead of all three hundred school districts. You know, working in competition with one another.
I think we get that each of us get a mailing, a hard copy mailing of that from ISB. Does that sound right? Actually shows the priorities.
Yes.
Or legislative priorities for the coming year.
Absolutely, that's correct. And again, that goes through. The delegate assembly at convention and voted on by all the districts and larger districts have more votes, so sometimes we don't get a whole lot of voice in those things, but. It's it's making our our voice heard in these.
Yep.
There is no more discussion. I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty three IASB legislative priorities as listed.
I'll second.
A motion and second to approve the twenty twenty three IASB legislative priorities as listed and as recommended by Mr. George. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item four, consider open enrollment requests.
Again, based upon our new policy, each month as I receive open enrollment requests in or open or open enrollment requests out, I'll be providing these. Again, the only reason to deny these is if there's insufficient classroom space, and so. There aren't any concerns in regards to insufficient classroom space provided here and then again. We can either decide to waive the eligibility period for athletic competition at the varsity level or we can deny that. So in these cases, it's, you know, I provided some documentation in the packet for the rationale to. Waive the eligibility requirement for all students that are listed here.
Does the home district have some vote in that also?
Yep, so it has to be mutual in both the sending and receiving.
Is that only in the case of it being a new open enrollment request? So if a student has been open enrollment here for three years, for example, do they still have to potentially get voted on by the other district?
Just the the first time.
Just the first time.
Yep, yep. Kind of in a gray area here right now because the law just changed, right? And so there used to be, you know, good cause exemptions when it comes to eligibility and so. The legislature didn't define any good cause exemptions for that, so if you remember in the past, if if you, like you were talking about, been a student here. And then you moved to another district, but you want to continue to to go, which is the case for seven out of the eight here, that was a. A good cause exemption if you're. Have a pervasive bullying and harassment or a health condition that that was also a good cause exemption. None of that stuff's defined anymore. And so we're just kind of continuing to operate in those same rules until we receive updated guidance that says yes or no, so. That's again the reason to waive the ninety day eligibility rule for both of these or all eight of these students involved.
And just as a reminder to the board over here in the meeting, we can speak their name and their grade, but the rest of the information we received is confidential, so. Camps should not be discussing that in an open meeting, not that we would, just as a reminder.
You know, if you guys have questions about that, I encourage you to reach out priorly. Another reason why I would put the packet out a week ahead of time. And then if we need to have a conversation as a full board, that's when we would have to go into closed session, much like we would in the event of a. A hearing for termination of an employee, similar process for open enrollments.
The classroom space is good, so.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the eight open enrollments.
I have just one question.
Yep.
On the the last one, I believe it's the individual rather than the family. Do we have the supports in place for that student?
Yep.
Probably Mrs. Harmon mostly.
Mr. Engelmann, Mr. or Mrs. Harmon, Ben, in the loop.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Just want to make sure that that's a appears to be a delicate one.
So we have a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the open enrollment requests as listed. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item five, consider policy, first reading of. Policies listed here, so go ahead, Mr. George.
Yeah, so again, the only policy here is the Good Conduct Rule five oh three oh four. The steps of appeal are the only things changing here to align with that same student complaints and grievances process. So step one is appeal to the athletic director, again, identifying those specific timelines, five days. And then to the principal, again, similar five day process to make your appeal and then for. Mr. Engelmann to schedule that appeals hearing and then to myself and then ultimately the board would be the final step in that appeals process, the Good Conduct Rule. Again, just trying to. Create some consistency in these appeals processes.
So do you recommend having a second reading in this one? Okay, and so we'd be approving just the first reading tonight?
Yep.
Discussion, questions? I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy five oh three point four. I'll second.
A motion and second to approve the first reading of policy five oh three point zero four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Course and all, so we have the hirings as listed plus those that we added when we adopted the agenda. I think we can take the resignation at the same time, too. Mr. George?
Yeah. As it's as they're listed. In the kind of the explanations and details that the principals or Mr. Cruz provided. Kind of speaking generically here, we still have need for paraeducators, learner assistants at both the elementary and secondary level. And then food service staff members. Kind of the part time positions to serve from ten thirty to one thirty. So we continue to try to recruit folks to those positions. But. You can see Jeff Jaeger is the recommendation for girls wrestling coach, head girls wrestling coach. Eric Arnold as middle school robotics. Kelly Wyler and Kirsten Van de Kopp for co prom sponsor and Katie Kelderman as volunteer cheer coach. The TLC mentors are not only for our. New. To the profession staff. But also those that have transferred into new positions this year. So. Any additional comments or feedback, Mr. Engelmann?
No. So I think one of them. Okay, so Kelly Wyler, for example, is a mentor for Jamie, just because she's in a new position.
Yep, so that's just a one year mentoring. Jamie's been a classroom teacher, but she hasn't been in special ed.
Okay, same way for Noah Jones, because she was in special ed, she's transitioning to general ed classroom.
Correct.
That's why you have a mentor.
Yep.
There are no more questions. I entertain a motion to approve the hirings and resignation.
So can I ask a slightly question? You know, like this.
You know, like, this shows, like Denise is on this printed copy, but she's not in here.
Right, so when I printed your copy, it was not published at that time because she had not accepted the position. So that was my mistake of what went out, but I was not in communication as well as I should have been.
Well, then, like, how come Brendan's, Brendan's in?
I just added.
Because we just added it today? I only saw what you saw.
Yep.
So, okay, I'm just trying to understand something.
Yep.
That'd be why, when I printed it, it turned out in yellow.
Correct.
Okay.
We had offered, she hadn't accepted.
Yep.
That's why it was in yellow. And again, when we amended the agenda here, that's why it shows up in yellow tonight. And then.
Because mine doesn't show in yellow.
Mine doesn't show at all?
Yeah, I only have nine, I don't have Denise or Brenda.
Correct, because on our side, it's admin, and we didn't publish them until you approved them. He didn't then adjust the agenda while we were sitting here because it's being broadcast and it's part of open public discussion. If he would have.
You could add a sticky note that it was added to, I mean.
Correct.
Like other hirings, I just put sticky note to have those.
Correct, so if he would have then republished, which we don't do while we're just sitting here, but yeah.
So even though it's there, we don't see it on our?
He's showing it on our more non-restricted view.
Yeah, our admin.
Our admin view, he's showing.
So I could publish the meeting here, and then it would go from yellow to white, you know?
And so will you after our meeting, does that happen then? And so then, if I would go look at it tomorrow or whatever, it's going to show?
Our amendments.
Yep.
And all the supporting documents that go along with it in the detail.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the hirings as listed and the resignation as listed.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the hirings and resignation as listed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Item J, announcements, needs to remember.
Again, a host of back-to-school items here. One thing that we didn't point out earlier in the meeting, we do have a kindergarten parents' night, Monday, the 29th, and much like parent-teacher conferences, but for kindergartners, since it's their first, they'll have their first week of classes in. So parents are invited in, and then that same Friday, the second, kindergartners do not have school. Everybody else, first grade through senior, has school on that Friday before the Labor Day holiday. And then kindergarten student, or excuse me, our preschool students start the Tuesday after Labor Day on the 6th.
And is that TK first day also?
TK starts, their first day will be Wednesday, the 24th. So they start just like we would with all other kids, and they're only in class Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, so their first day is our, technically, our second day of school. But they're on their regular schedule.
So do they have TK school on the Friday, the 2nd, and not kindergarten?
We don't have a, yeah, we don't have a TK parent night.
TK doesn't have school Fridays.
Yep. So. Everybody's good with Monday, September 12th?
I was going to ask now, we're out of the summer months now, until the school came on.
Seventh grade volleyball, eighth grade volleyball, middle school JV and varsity cross-country at West Lyon, JVR and JV football versus who center Nick Melfield, 7:00 PM working.
So yeah, we're back to just a few things.
I'll have cross-country. Might be done by, I can't remember, I only had one season of cross-country.
It starts at 4:30.
Yeah.
So, and it's at West Lyon, so. I would think you should be, you should be done, it's just whether you're ready to be in a board meeting.
Maybe also. Sounds good. Anything else? Okay. Okay, adjourned. Take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
So what kind of processor do you have? Like, mine is slow, like, when I click on the next thing, I have to wait a little bit, but yours seems fast.
I don't know, this is, this is a pretty hardcore book. It's from, this is actually my computer. So I, I just got it.
And this is relatively new, too, but it's a rise and set.
Do you know?
And rise and set. I actually, I don't want to call this person by name.
Yeah, mine's like, it's a super.